I'm not going to kick anybody out.
Yeah.
To your point.
Twenty twenty five Lackawanna City Council meeting. We start with the caucus at which point in time we give the council members an opportunity to discuss and ask questions about the individual agenda items, should there be any, and the formal meeting will follow directly after the caucus. First, several items are administrative, and therefore we'll move on to item number seven, our communications from the division department has city comptroller request city council approve. City comptroller requests city council approve the ordinance to move a total of $510,104.62 back to the general fund for work that's been completed in accordance with the grant/fund source requirements. Any council members have any questions on item number seven? There's an associated ordinance attached thereto. Communications from citizens, number eight, criminal express request. City council approved closing of Church Street Saturday 28th from 11:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Annual first words, Summer Fest, Senior Day. Any council members have any questions or comments on number eight? I would ask Director Morocco, have you looked at this? Does it cause any problems with street egress, egress, any of that?
No, I think we can do that without an issue.
Any council members have any comments on number eight? Number nine, communication from John Abrams, request to address the city council on following topics, stealing of traffic lights, splash pad, Lackawanna fun days. John, you'll have an opportunity to speak after the vote is adjourned. Under business registrations, A, LS7 Auto LLC, twelve belt, Abbott Road, Mohamed Al Yari, buying and selling of vehicles to the previous car dealership. Any council members have any questions on A, under business registrations? Director Clark D., is this a continuous use as a car lot?
It is. It's the former, it was Atkins Car Dealership way, way back in the day, and it is a continued use. And there is a site plan limitation on the number of vehicles that could be out and in the public at any one time.
Any council members have any comments on A? We've got the B, Oshai Sushi, fifteen zero six, Abbott Road, Stacy I Zang restaurant. Location was previously stacked burger. Any council members have any questions on that business registration? Moving on to table items, removal from the table of business registrations, Public Auto Connect seventeen fifty four Abbott Road, Nicholas Porzkowski, used cars sales. This matter has been before the council on a couple other occasions. And it's, we could either take this off the table today to vote it up or down, ask for other direction on this particular item. Our city attorney did a fabulous job of putting together a memo which addresses all of the issues and possibilities available to the council regarding this matter. I don't know if the council has any questions or any comments they wish to address at this night.
Yeah, I just wanted, if I may ask, the public safety director, is there any more tickets issued over there or any?
Not that I know of.
Who would know?
I'd have to, if Bill comes in, is Bill here?
Yeah.
Tickets on that?
To my knowledge, I don't believe there was. I don't believe there was any more calls.
When they called, did they write that? Do they still keep that book by the?
That's all done on the computer now.
Oh, wow.
We don't have to daybook any.
I remember when they used to write it in the book.
Yeah, I do too.
I guess I'm old.
Yeah, as far as I know, there's been no complaints. So I haven't checked since last week, so if there was any over the weekend, but.
All right. No cars told?
Nope, not that I'm aware of.
All right.
Thank you. The council member, there have been no code enforcement related calls there either. Everything is up to date.
All right, anyone else on the council have any comments on that table item?
What can you, I mean?
Yes, go ahead.
City clerk, what are we going to do about the minutes?
Oh, it needs to be amended from last week. Three D, I'm going to re-listen to the minutes to make sure the vote was correct.
Three, okay. So we're not going to vote on that?
Since I don't know if it is accurate or not, I have to check.
All right, so we're not going to vote on the minutes until the next meeting?
Oh, that's up to you. If you'd like to, yes, you can wait until the next meeting. Or as a matter of fact, you know, next meeting.
So when did this come to anybody's attention?
Right before the meeting.
Yeah, just bump it.
We might want to just table it so that we can all have a chance to look at it. All right, now, unless there's anything else, the meeting is formally called in order for. Take the roll, please.
Mafladi, present. Anderson, Moretti.
Here.
Sirdak.
Here.
Morano.
Here.
Law Department.
Here.
Development Marketing.
Here.
Public Works.
Here.
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June ninth, twenty twenty five.
Morano moves to table the minutes of the reg, approval of the minutes of regular meeting of June ninth, twenty twenty five.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdak, to table the minutes of the regular meeting of June ninth, twenty twenty five. Mafladi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdak?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero.
On hearings from citizens, we'll begin that. Catherine Miller, you're welcome to come forward.
Good evening. I have a comment. I'm here again on Public Auto Connect. We know that the registration is probably going to be up revoked tonight. I'm representing all the neighbors, and many are fearful of retaliation. Things have been better, but not perfect. There's still a lot of customers parking illegally and such. So basically, I'm just here to find out that if it does pass, can we put stipulations in where we can limit the amount of cars that he has on the property, that we enforce that he has parking for customers and employees on his property, which wouldn't be an issue as long as his car limit is limited? And if it goes back to all the nonsense, because he's just being good right now, will we be able to revoke his license if he doesn't follow the laws? A lot of the concerns come from him knowing what our concerns were, from not only the conversation with myself, but the clerk's office also told him the issues when he was there, because one of the clerks lives on the street. So he made it where when Nick was in there doing his registration, what the issues were with the neighbors. And it never changed until last meeting when he spoke to you guys. Also, you know, Lackawanna, we should be proud of our small businesses. We have a lot of great towing collision companies, restaurants, everything. If you look at his business reviews, they're not good. As customer service, as the car's being met, it's like one point four star rating. So that's just our worry, that it's just going to go back. So thank you for your time, thank you for listening and considering all our issues.
To your question, I don't know what the council is going to do with this tonight or even take it off the table. But as I indicated earlier, Ariana, our city attorney, did a marvelous job in identifying the issues that the council has faced with. First of all, there was a valid registration license issued, so he's technically not in violation of his operating license as it stands. Secondly, Ariana checked the state law as to those kinds of violations that have caused municipalities to revoke business registrations in the past. You would be amazed to see what the Superior Courts on appeal have overturned as a result of the revocation of business registration certificates by municipalities. It's not to say that this body can't do that, it's just that it's an uphill battle. I don't know what the council is going to do today. We may try to possibly set some conditions on a reissuance of a business certificate. But notice also, and it came up the last meeting, you can say that you saw cars being driven at a high rate of speed without a license or a registration or an inspection certificate, without identifying who owns those cars, where they come from, you don't have much to prosecute on.
Right.
And if you call the police for enforcement, by the time the police get there, and then they could be, you know.
Yeah, they're usually already back at one of the.
It's already done.
Right.
Right? So, you know, the council has to balance, again, a person's right to be in business. I mean, the guy, I'm sure, bought the business for a decent amount of money, invested in that business, and to have it pulled out from under him because he's not a good neighbor without sufficient proof is a heavy load for the council to carry. We could do that, but on appeal, it might just get overturned. And I'm not saying that to defend him, I'm just saying that those are the facts.
Right, which doesn't understand.
Yeah. Ariana, do you care to add anything to that?
Not substantially, Your Honor. I think you did a good job of summarizing it, but I think the issue is really whether revoking the business license would be proportional to the documented issues at the property. So I think Council President Morano did a good job kind of summarizing that.
Yeah, as long as he, you know, follows the rules, we don't care about him being there. We just, you know, it's a safety issue for the neighborhood, that's our biggest thing.
And rightfully so. And perhaps the council would consider reissuing a license, but setting those kinds of conditions that seem to affect your neighborhood, so it helps to ensure that he's a better neighbor from now on. You know, I think the council might consider doing that, but I can't speak for everyone.
Does the council have the authority to set conditions in order to, without setting conditions when the registration has already been granted? Do we have the ability to retract?
I would think would have, is going to have to follow a due process formula. In other words, he'd have to be cited for a possible revocation.
So it would be the courts to decide?
No, it'd still be this body, and there may have to be a hearing. And then, depending on what the results of the hearing are, a possible registration or amended registration or a registration with restrictions on it might be issued. But those are my thoughts. Ariana, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yes, that's correct. Under the city code, the council has the authority to have a revocation hearing or a public hearing on notice to the business owner. And then the code specifically says that the council can revoke it, reissue it, or reissue it with conditions.
And in the meantime, does that trigger the due process through the courts? Like, he can't, he won't be able to appeal it until the decision from the council is rendered?
That's correct.
How long has he had registration?
As far as street parking goes, if any, either public safety director or checking with, you know, is there street parking available for anybody on that street anyways? It's not just, you know, it's not a no parking street.
Bedford boroughs, areas of, anybody can park there as long as they're following the alternative parking rules.
Right, so, and I only ask that because, I'm sorry, your name, I followed Catherine, mentioned that they're illegally parked, which is a load.
There's, so from the top of the street to the very first house where the business is located, there's no parking from here to corner. So when they're parking, they're parking in that area, which is making it difficult to turn on and off the street.
That was a comment I was going to make, and it was especially commonplace in the wintertime. You had all the snow piles and things of that nature, so what you just described was even greater concern. But in general, outside of that requirement, there's no limitation on who can park on that street for whatever reason. In fact, when the nightcap was in business back in the day, there were people parking, you know, all over that neighborhood, so.
Anyone else have any comments? Catherine, thank you.
Thank you.
Lynette Welch?
I've been tracking the June bands and all, I have all the documented data, screenshots that we have in under a decimal seventy five. I did go in front of Officer Adams' house on June fourteenth to get the reading while the band was playing, and it read fifty eight point one. I'm asking that this council approve the permit for the days previously requested for July and August and continue to monitor. Officer Adams has been witnessed, was witnessed on June fourteenth, going to several houses on Victory Avenue. And regardless of intent, this man is an officer of Lackawanna Police Department. The community is well aware of his position. By him speaking to people in the communities to support his opinion, I believe that calls were made under duress or intimidation due to his position of authority in the community. With that being said, again, we are doing our best. The band that was scheduled to play this Saturday did not know if they could keep it under seventy five, so they played inside and we lost business, because people walked in, saw it wasn't out on the patio, and. So this is becoming harmful to my business. I need people there, the bands, people like to come sit outside and enjoy the few days that we do get nice weather and listen to the bands outside. I'm doing everything I've been requested to do with keeping it under the seventy five decimals.
Okay, but you also know there's the fifty foot rule too, right?
Correct.
Okay. Are you within compliance on that?
No, but we still are not, other businesses aren't either.
Okay, we're not talking about other businesses, right? We're talking about yours.
Yeah.
And you did what we asked you to do as far as the decimals are concerned. I still get phone calls from residents who tape from their porches or whatever and complain that the music is loud. This is a unique situation to this community. In the Floridian News the other day, there's an establishment in Kenmore, they're faced with the same thing. The only difference is they have eight hundred people there instead of, you know, the handful of people you get. But it still annoys us. You try to balance what you need to do to be a successful business and what you need to do to be a good neighbor. Nobody on that street is interfering with your right to do business, but yet the music is loud enough that it does interfere with their quiet enjoyment of their residences. So we, as a council, are almost tasked with an impossible resolution, other than one way or the other saying, go ahead, you have free rein, or no, we got to stop the music. So we're trying to find a balance. Doing the best we can is all I can say. I don't know if any other council members have any comments, but we're appreciative of the fact that you went through the steps to get a decimal meter, that you drew a contract with your entertainment where they agreed to be within that range and that you maintained that range. So I guess as a body, we need to make a decision, since apparently you are in compliance. I don't know, Director Morocco, whether or not you've gotten, or the police department has not gotten any further complaints?
I haven't gotten any. Captain?
I don't believe there was any complaints this weekend, or was there some previous weekend?
And Captain, did anyone from the police department check the decimals on that?
I don't, I don't believe they did. I think they just went over there and added positive, the folks over there and asked them to turn it off.
And does the police department have a decimal meter?
Yes, sir, we do.
Director Morocco, might be worthwhile even doing a random test. I mean.
Yeah.
We're in a difficult situation, because we want to see businesses be successful. It's our residents, you know.
Sure.
If it's on a weekend and they're home from work and they want to enjoy their outside also, it's tough for them to do that, especially if they don't like the kind of moving music that might be playing at that time, so. All right, Ms. Welch, have you got anything else?
Yes, Officer Maxim did come in on June fourteenth, and she said the music was fine. She did not tell me to lower it, she said it was fine, and she left.
Okay.
At seven fifty-five, when the band quits at seven o'clock, and the karaoke does not start until eight, another officer, Monaco, came and said he was replying to a phone call that they received at seven fifty for a noise complaint. And I asked him, what noise complaint? As the band has been done for almost an hour and karaoke hasn't even started yet. So to me, that's just ludicrous. Why would somebody call at seven fifty for a noise complaint when there's not even any noise? Me talking, if I put the decimal reader, me talking right now is going over seventy five.
I can't speak to that, so.
What I was going to say is, I think the owner's problem is, we only approved June, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, okay, you, she's booking, you got to book the band?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And our next meeting is when?
Fourth of July.
Yeah, you're booked, you're booking when?
Well, you told me to book through July and August, and if I was in compliance with what you guys requested, which I have all the data, and the band played inside this week because they didn't think they could be under seventy five, so, and it was set by one of these gentlemen on the end, that you would consider approving the July and August bands. If I'm in compliance and I've done, I have all the data here, I have all the signatures from the band members, and I'm doing everything that I was requested to do.
Right.
So obviously, if the meeting is not till the fifteenth, I don't even know if the bands can play in July.
Yeah. Well, when the appropriate time of the meeting comes up, we might make a motion to revisit this, so that won't be till later in the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Melinda Martin?
So she pretty much covered most of it, but as the person, as the bar manager that books all these bands, so I booked these bands way, way before all this mess, because we have to, if we don't book, we're not going to get good bands. Like, that's just how it is, because they're booked. So, I mean, I researched it, I have it all, normal conversation sixty, seventy, the heavy traffic out here is eighty to ninety decimals, and then you have sports events, motorcycles, neighbors that play loud music, that's ninety to a hundred. So these motorcycles that go by with loud music, or you guys have an event that have a band, that's going to be way louder than seventy five decimals, but I'm sure nobody's going to complain. As a bar, I mean, we help everybody in the community, anybody that needs a benefit, anything, we throw it. No matter who it is, no matter if they are a customer, anybody that reaches out for a donation, anything, we help them. So us looking at the community, we need these guys, because it's only a couple, it's somebody that's been banned from the bars, somebody that's been terminated, somebody that's got an issue with us outside of the music. We have multiple people that come into the bar that live, you know, a couple houses the same street, whatever, they come to see the band, they sit on their porches and listen to the band. So we're, us as a bar, we feel like we're being harassed, so, I mean, we just want, I mean, you can see here, they're all here to support us, and we just hope you guys can support us as well.
Thank you, Melinda. Lori Johannes?
I'm one of the witnesses on the journey on the fourteenth event. I was sitting on the porch of the residency with my mom and my brother, enjoying the music right before I had to come up for karaoke, because my boyfriend is a karaoke DJ. We stayed under the decimal meters, like the officer asked us, and I even have proof of pictures and everything that we stayed under. And I just, like, you guys know that some of the residents don't really care if we listen to the music outside of this. We enjoyed it. We sat out on our porches before going up and enjoying karaoke. And, you know, the officer came in, you know, told us to turn the music on, and I watched people eat, because they sing louder, you know, than the decimals, and they left. So then, now the karaoke business is now a bit louder, because if we don't get enough singers in, we're going to lose our contract. So, I just wanted to say that.
Anything else?
No, that'll be it.
All right, Lori, thank you. Hey, Jenison?
Good evening. Hi, I've been going to the Ice House for about three years now. Enjoy going to the bands on Saturday, nothing more, I don't want to be at home. I want to be out with my friends, enjoying music, never seen it issued before. I don't know, all of a sudden, there's an issue now, I don't understand why, but, I mean, I know a lot of people that love coming to the bands, and it just, it sustains it, so. I mean, nobody wants to sit inside on a nice hot day, listen to music. I would want to do that, enjoy the weather while we have the nice couple days in the house, so.
Okay, well, please, thank you. Deborah Deegan, do you have something? Do you have anything?
I've been working for the Ice House for five years this month, and the people that come on Saturdays to listen to the band outside are not only just from this neighborhood, but they're bringing money in. They're coming from Hamburg, they're coming from Lachlan, Houghton, South Buffalo, they're calling from everywhere. And they said, it's a free band, they're getting us for nothing, and they enjoy, especially the older people that come, and they want, they're very upset that the bands might stop or, like they said, we had to quit one day, and they said, well, aren't you going to put any food? Because we put food out, we do the football games for them, we do this, we do that. But it needs to be allowed there, because if you go to a lotte around here or something you have, your music is way, way louder than anything you could hear. And like you said, the motorcycles, the guys working on the roads over there, and some of the people that are complaining do not even live in Lackawanna. They live somewhere else, they live in West Seneca, they live here. But you got to look at also who's making the claims and why specifically they're making all of a sudden when we've been doing it for five years, and now all of a sudden it's a problem. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. Evan Maddigan?
Hello, everybody. Hello. I just, I love coming to watch the bands, I mean, it's something I look forward to every week. Also, they, these aren't just any bands, and I know that they, you know, they pay them a lot of money, so if people don't show up, they take a loss, you know? So a lot of people, you know, a lot of people come here from, like, depths all over to see these bands, and I met a lot of good people, you know, on Saturday afternoon, and I know a lot of people that from all over, like Hamburg, like to come here and, you know, watch the bands, and that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Evan. Heather?
Good evening. I've been, I've been to all the bands that played outside of the Panero for several years, the most recent one being at six seven and six fourteen. I was sitting directly in front of the band with my.
Thank you, Evan. Heather?
I've been, I've been to all the bands that played outside of the patio for several years, the most recent one being at six-seven and six-fourteen. I was sitting directly in front of the band with my family, in the front table, and, and other people that were in, in this room. We were able to carry on a conversation without having to yell to one another and could hear each other just fine. I actually heard a man from the patio yelling to the band to turn it up on six-fourteen, they said they couldn't. I've lived in Lackawanna all my life, and the Ice House Pub has been there for nine years. Before that, it was Cherrystone for several years, and a bar was there before the Cherrystone. That being said, in, in the neighborhood, no, no, there was a bar when they moved in.
Thank you, Evan. John Crowe?
Well, I think a lot of people made a lot of good points. I just wanna say, we really enjoy good music, we really enjoy community, and great music brings community together, and this bar is more than, you know, we're, we're family. And we look out for each other, and it just, I, and what that is, trying to encourage Dan is to, to do what you want her to do, and the rest of us are just, you know, pulling for her, and she's our sister, you know, she's, and that's community. And I think that's what it's all about.
Thank you, John. Rose Maxwell? Rose Maxwell? Did you wanna come forward and say something?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right, well, we, I thank all of you, we all thank you for being here and, um, taking the time out of your evening, uh, to let us know how I feel about it, and, and hopefully we can address that at the appropriate time a little later in the, in the meeting. You're welcome to stick around or however you feel about it. All right, Lloyd McPhee?
Uh, City Controller requests the City Council approve the ordinance to move a total of five hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and four dollars and sixty-two cents back to the general fund for work that has been completed in accordance with the grant funding source requirements.
Right, I want to receive file act on ordinance.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to receive the file act on ordinance. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. An ordinance authorizing an interfund transfer between the general fund and the capital fund in the amount totaling five hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and four dollars and sixty-two cents for the completion of various capital projects.
Right, I want to adopt ordinance written.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to adopt ordinance is written. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith requests the City Council approve the closing of Church Street on Saturday, June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, from eleven-thirty a.m. until three p.m. for the annual first ward, summer fest, and senior day.
Right, I want to approve request, refer to public works and public safety.
Moretti, second. Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve request, refer to public works and public safety. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. John Ingram requests to address the following topics, steel on a traffic light, splash pad, mic on a furnace.
John, you have the floor?
Thank you. County vote for twenty-five Church Street. I'm fired, um, still, still on the traffic light. I'd like to thank the mayor, uh, former director, Tony Samuel, and our new director, and Mr. Chuck Clark, because when this was broken up, when me and Dean were under, when I was fortunate enough to be a council, we did a lot of work to get stuff done, but it was the mayor and Chuck Clark that did a lot of stuff to make sure, especially the back behind the scene. It was, it was the mayor to make sure that Kennedy and them got involved, whatever. Um, therefore, councilwoman may have made a call to Kennedy, but it was the mayor and Chuck Clark who did a lot of work so we can get this light. And with that light also come a crosswalk, which we have been acting for, for the last four or five months, you know, longer than that. I'm glad to see that it's coming, but the people need to know that it didn't just come overnight. It took a lot of work and took a lot of people, it took a lot of people to do this, not one individual, not two individuals, it took a lot of people to do it, and took some people, especially Mr. Clark, and he doesn't say anything, but I'm gonna say something. Took a lot of work behind the scene to get this done. My second issue is the splash pad, both of them. When the splash pad first came, it was the mayor that got the splash pad, and she tried to get two. She was, she wanted one to go in the first ward, but she couldn't, she had to wait till it get, put the one in on Franklin. And greatly, we had some issues, we had people tearing up property, tearing it up fast as they do, do, built, was building, we had a pipe leak, whatever. Splash pad is open now. It was never, it was never, no doubt it wasn't gonna be open. That's the second ward war, second council's war. He doesn't say, he doesn't say, I've got a good comment. But that took a lot of work from behind the scene, and I don't think people know that. I think people get, take, give credit and take credit for stuff that other people have done. Now, I am not running for nothing, so I say what I wanna say, you know what I'm saying? But I say, I watch people that have been here put a lot of work and, and get crucified, like they're not doing anything, and that is wrong, you know? And I say that because it is truly ticked me off to watch people say stuff about people who have, like they're not working, and they're working very hard. The mayor did a tremendous job getting this black pad, but the clerk did a tremendous job trying to put the steel on, put the steel on and stuff. Y'all have a good board, but sometimes they, people need to know that, what y'all do that you don't brag about, you don't say about. And my last, my other thing is Lackawanna Community Fund Day. This year is on the twenty-first and twenty-second. We will have over forty-five to fifty health industries, and I hope everybody can form this group, because we have all, happy to have all this. We call it Community Fund Day because it's for the whole city of Lackawanna. We have a lot of surprises going on in there. We're fortunate enough, we have our congressman, Kennedy, we, we there, April Bass, our senator, and hopefully we will have our governor in there. We have a lot of wars that we're gonna be warring. Two of the wars that we're gonna be warring is two former local policemen, Charles O'Connor and William Tacker. You know, they were two outstanding police officers when they worked for the city of Lackawanna. We have another young lady, a young lady that formed her own business. We have a lot of people that we're gonna be saying thank you to, and I hope everybody come here. And I, that's my.
John, excuse me, is it twenty-first and twenty-second of July or August?
August, twenty-first, twenty-second. And one more thing I say, I remember when the Ice House was, got built, when they spent a lot of money getting in there. I commend these people to come in here. I've been in the Ice House myself, you know? I remember what it was for. It takes a lot of courage to spend that much money and invest in Lackawanna. Retail businesses are coming, that's, so we're supposed to do everything to try to help them. Now, if they're not doing what they're supposed to do, yes, they're supposed to close, now do what we do. But I think it's gotta be a partnership, and they need help, let's see what they need to help. Thank you.
Uh, John, I, I would just take exception to one thing you said. While you're talking about the street light and a little bit of the splash pad, you did make a comment that Chuck Clark, Director of Development, sister and never says very much.
Well, you know, maybe try and get rid of me, 'cause you all cut me short.
Thank you, John. Is that an invitation to speak or what? All right, I want to receive a cloud.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to receive the file. Maflahe? Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
LS Seven Auto LLC, twelve-twelve Abbott Road, Mohammed Al Yarri, buying and selling of vehicles, this was pre, previously a car dealership.
Right, I want to approve business registration.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve business registration. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. Oshai Sushi, fifteen oh six Abbott Road, Big Cia Zhang Restaurant, um, this location was previously Stack Burger.
I want to approve business registration.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve business registration. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Remove from the table business registration, Public Auto Connect, seventeen fifty-four Abbott Road, Nicholas Korskowsky used car, used car sales.
Is there a motion to remove it from the table? If not, then the matter remains on the table, and I would suggest the council, um, discuss this matter further with city attorney and try to arrive at a reasonable resolution, possibly along the lines that was discussed earlier with Catherine Miller, regarding setting some guidelines, restrictions. So unless there is a motion and a second, the matter remains on the table.
Is this registration, um, Public Auto Connect, that signed up?
No, I think we don't need to do that.
Go ahead.
Morano moves to waive the rules to entertain the request by the Ice House to continue outdoor entertainment under their original business, um, entertainment licensing clause.
Moretti, second.
I can't remember all that. Right, I want to, um, waive the rules. Do you do the rest of that?
Too funny.
Yes.
Right, I want to, to, uh, waive the rules to, I don't know, to entertain the Ice House application for continuation of the outdoor music, and outdoor entertainment permit. For what? Is it for July, August?
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, moves to waive the rules to entertain Ice House Pub continuation of outdoor entertainment for July and August. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero. Thank you.
Well, we gotta vote on the, on the. We did the. You just did that. Morano moves that the Ice House, um, request for a continuation of the outdoor entertainment permit be granted for the months of July and August with the stipulations that they abide by, uh, the sound requirements, uh, of the city of Lackawanna. Right, I think.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to honor the Ice House request, Ice House Pub request for outdoor entertainment for the months of July and August, and they must abide by the sound requirements of Lackawanna. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Surtai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry five zero.
Someone else? Just like to speak to the problem we're having at South Park and Ridge. Mr. Durkin, could you give us an update on when this street will be open?
Wednesday, this week, Wednesday.
Wednesday, this week?
Yes.
There was a, there was a holdup, could've been done earlier, but there wasn't there a holdup?
There was an issue with the sidewalk right in front of the convenience store right there. There was an old, um, like, metal elevator shaft that's, they use for deliveries that they found was collapsed.
Right.
So the basement wall needed to be reinforced, reinforced, and they poured the new concrete sidewalk in it.
Excellent.
And, um, we're striping the road tomorrow morning.
Okay, okay. My mainly responsible president, also Dan, uh, I've got a few complaints on Ridge Road. They have come towards, you know, past the taco place, there's a couple big dents there, like, looks like the, the utilities dug it up?
Yeah, we, we filled it in last week, it made it a little better. Um, we just have to wait till we mill it out and hot patch it, but we did, we put the patch.
So it's our responsibility or do the utilities come back?
So it's been longer than two years, I called Erie County, it was Erie County Water Authority, and they honor the street cuts for up to two years, so it's been longer than two years. So, yeah, it is the city's responsibility, yeah.
And then, I was at the splash pad today, uh, by Kirby and Center, it's dug up there, looks like utilities, and then those stones, right at the corner.
Yeah, right at the corner.
Right, Kirby, it looks like a bomb's on there. If you don't mind me bringing it up.
No, Kirby's gonna be right back.
Um, soon, Kirby will be redone soon. I'll actually, um, now, I know.
Still, I think it's still a hazard now, if somebody walks there and breaks their leg, it's a lawsuit.
We'll go take a look at it for sure. We'll get it cleaned up. And Kirby will be starting soon, um, next council meeting, our approval for construction for the contractor.
Nice, good. Okay, anyone else? All right, is that, Morano moves to adjourn?
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adjourn meeting. Maflahe? Yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Uh, Moretti?
Yes.
Surtai?
Yes.
Morano? Five zero.